The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Waverne City Council held in council chambers at 6:00 PM, Monday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. To start off with, I'd like to, before we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, I'd like to welcome our two youth council, Grayson Niffle and Erica Sin. They are sitting in the back over here. They have joined us with our, just give a wave there, ladies, if you would, and they are the ones who are in the back and they're, you've got, if you wish to speak up, raise your hand and you can add to the meeting, although you can't vote, you can add to the meeting. First off, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held January 24th, 2022. If you would, please.
I so move your worship.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Petition to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Thank you, worship, council. We need a motion to delete 10A from the agenda tonight.
10A, okay.
I can give you that motion, your worship.
Your worship, I'll second that. Apologies, council.
Called a question, all in favor? 10A is deleted. Any other, any additions, Mr. Warren?
No, your worship.
Counsel? We're seeing nothing more. Called a question, all in favor? Good, moving forward. No public hearings or notices, no delegations, proclamations, or petitions. Reports to standing committees. We have the planning and development annual report and the engineering annual report. If we could, did you want to deliver any of these or?
There'll be presentations tonight, your worship.
Presentations, okay. So, planning and development annual report, we'll start off with that, please.
So, we have the planning and development department annual report for 2021, so I'll go over some of the key statistics. You can see the breakdown of construction value by category. Residential and commercial are up from last year's construction values. And you may see some differences based on last year had the fleet storage building included, so the numbers were a little bit up in 2020. And then there's a year-to-year comparison of permits issued based on the category of the permit and the grand totals. So, in 2021, there was three new dwellings created, 64 total permits at 6.5 million. And that's up from, or down from the previous year, but the total number of permits is higher and dwelling units is on par. And then each of the tables is broken down by the number of permits per month based on each category and the values, and that is compared between 2021 versus 2020. And then we've included some new development permit statistics on all the development permits that have been issued or denied throughout the year. So, there was a total of 35 permit applications. And they were mostly changes of use within existing buildings or units. There were several mobile food vendors, additions or additions of uses, and then the rest were fairly minor categories. The next table is the home-based business permits. A total of 15 home-based business permits were reviewed, and I believe all were approved. So, that gives you a summary of what they were all for and the different types of uses that we have as home-based businesses. There were three total development appeals, six permanent sign permits, and zero portable sign applications. There were seven total minor variances, and they were all approved. There was one subdivision application approved and two parcel tie applications. And there were four zoning bylaw amendments and two official community plan amendments, and that included the general amendments that were done to the bylaw. And then there's just a summary table at the end which compares the last six years. So, you can see the trends there. Home-based businesses are on par. Development permits are up quite a bit from the previous couple of years. Development appeals are on par, and legal subdivisions are on par with 2020, so. Counsel, any questions?
Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate the, all the work you did for that, put into that meeting.
Worship.
Yes.
Thanks, worship. Janine, I appreciate your report, so thanks, sorry. Thanks for your work. One of the things that stood out for me, and also I'm just going to ask you kind of what your crystal ball says, one of the things that stood out for me is our commercial development permits, 11, last year. I think that's on page three of your report. Maybe that'll be easier if we do it that way. At 11, so that is the highest that it has been, number of permits since 2017, when it was 13, but the highest dollar value since 2015. Now, I get that the dollar value on the commercial permits might be growing exponentially just because of the rising cost of construction, but just kind of looking forward to what's on your desk, do you think that that trajectory will continue? It will start to, it will continue to see that level of construction and investment? That's a hard question. I get it, totally get it. Just asking you to look into your crystal ball.
I think that we'll continue to see growth in that area, especially with the implementation of the new commercial incentive program that people can take advantage of. I think that will incentivize some more projects being done and some more major projects because of the dollar value that you have to get to do those incentives, so.
I would agree. So, if somebody was looking to do a project like that, could they, they could come and see you? I think they could go down to the chamber office or the ECH Dev Office. Everybody's got information on that?
Yeah, you can refer to the website, and if you have any more questions, you can contact me directly.
Great, thank you.
There's no further questions? Engineering, if you would, please, your committee?
Okay, I'll try not to be too long-winded and just hit the highlights in this report, so I'll try my best on that. So, the 2021 engineering report, so this includes the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and the water treatment plant. So, on the first page, I'm just going to kind of go with the quote there and say, "In 2021, we saw many challenges on our projects, but the engineering department took that as an opportunity to learn and adapt. Despite an ongoing pandemic that saw supply chain issues, increased costs, and changing restrictions, all departments within engineering stepped up to ensure there was no disruption to essential services for residents. I'm thankful to all the staff for their flexibility and dedication during these unprecedented times. And although I am the one presenting this report, this only is because of the great employees that stand with me in my department and all their dedicated, hard work to make these projects come to life." So, first, we're going to hit some highlights. So, skydiving at the airport was something that was new for us this year. So, the Skydive South SAS Club, they are usually in Moose Jaw, but they chose the Waverne Airport to operate from May to July while Moose Jaw underwent some renovations. And so, they were operating every weekend through that time, and a total of 209 skydiving flights took place at our airport. And, you know, they just, they said that they're extremely thankful that they were given the opportunity to operate in Waverne, and the reception and participation had by local residents far exceeded our expectations. So, that was kind of something neat and different for our airport this year. Next up is the 100 radon test kit challenge. So, in October, we did a promotional campaign on radon to educate residents the danger of it, and then we participated in what they call "Take Action on Radon." And we were offered 100 test kits, and we immediately were able to pass those out. We had such high response that we received additional 70 for the community. So, we received 170 free kits, and they were picked up, and they're actually being returned right now, and then with that, they'll be sent away for analysis from people's homes. And so, what'll happen is each individual resident will get a report that is for their home, and the municipality will get a more general report discussing radon across the community. So, and then if there is a high percentage of radon in that resident's home, they will be given further direction on how to mitigate the situation. So, we're excited to see the results from this come in, but yeah, the kits are just being brought back in now to City Hall. So, at the landfill, one thing is the Ministry of Environment approved our operations plan and asbestos waste acceptance plan. So, through this, a lot of it is just how we manage our site, waste handling and disposal procedures, special waste provisions, which is our asbestos, new cell construction environmental monitoring requirements. So, there's a lot of work that goes into building these things, and so it was a lot of work on the engineering department to build this plan and get it submitted, and we have gotten some pre-approval on the asbestos and then the approval of the operations plan. So, just to give you guys an idea, we did accept a little over 18,000 kilograms of asbestos in 2021, and that was just equivalent to about $4,500 in landfill tipping fees. Next is the N Bio Organic. So, this is a biological wastewater treatment enhancement project that we did a trial with in 2021. So, a lot of what we have is reoccurring problems of clogging, corrosion, and deterioration of the city's wastewater infrastructure caused by fat, oil, and grease, sludge buildup, and H2S gas. So, we partnered with this company to do a trial, and it's a biological treatment, so it's a lot more economical than a mechanical and chemical. And basically, prior to this, we were using an ACT design that we would kind of put in powdered form into this. But now, this is a continual injection of microbes that are designed for our specific waste within Waverne. And basically, they kind of, they eat away at all of this, all of this waste in it, and what we're seeing is that they can go through the entire system, so it's not, it's our lift stations, our sewer pipes, our lagoons, everything. And with it, we already saw great results from the trial, and there's some pictures there that kind of show that sludge depth in the lagoon in July. You can see that mound there, and in September, you can't see that mound anymore. And I think one of the things that attests to it, so our operators were having to clean 48 inches of grease buildup off the walls, pipes, and pumps in the lift station every couple of weeks. And our longest-serving employee, who has been with the city 40-plus years, said for the first time ever in his career with the city, the grease is no longer stuck to the walls and wastewater infrastructure, that they have completely removed that. So, I think that's a huge testament when it comes from one of our long-term operators. So, we're going to be continuing with this into 2021, and we'll be discontinuing the previous powdered act design we were using, and hopefully this will minimize our cleaning in there as well as it is a big safety measure for our operators because we're not putting them into a hazardous and confined space if they're not having to go down and clean. And our goal is to, to reduce the mechanical lagoon dredging, that hopefully we won't have to do that in the long term because these will actually, there won't be that sludge buildup. So, that was one of our big.
Questions?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Do you have some more?
Oh, I have lots more here, don't worry.
Oh, I thought you were.
No, I just had to take a breath here.
Okay.
So, the water treatment plant is up next, so Plant 100 Maintenance.
So, we've got some before and after pictures of our filters that were done, and we did an abrasive assembly blast cleaning and epoxy coating. So, this is to address rust issues causing contamination in the treated water. So, this was done in February of this year, but you can just see the difference on those tanks. I think the pictures kind of say it all. Another big thing in the water treatment plant is that we've been doing a lot of certification upgrades with our operators. So, we've been doing the training on-site, which has been a wonderful thing. It's been effective and safer for our employees during COVID, as well as it has saved us a significant amount of money, and they get that on-site continuous development. So, every one of our operators here, Frank Canoe, Juhun, and Shroes, have actually gone up a level in operation. So, we're a Level 4 plant, and some of these guys came in at junior operators, and then they've worked their way up to, you know, Level 1, Level 2, and they're working on their Level 3. So, it's been a continuous education piece for them, and they've done an amazing job on writing these tests and studying and increasing their level credentials. Another thing for the water treatment plan is the emergency response plan. So, this was a requirement under the environmental regulations. And so, essentially, this response plan is to deal with the chlorine that we have in the plant, and it's basically to prepare us in case we do have a chlorine leak, that it's all laid out for us in that event, that we are able to minimize any potential danger to human health or the environment. So, this just kind of goes through all the steps and plans and processes we have in place and resources we'd need. And the picture just shows the chlorine tanks there. So, this plan is now in place that if anything should happen, we're prepared and know how to handle it. Another one is the drainage channel maintenance project, so Saskatchewan Drive, First Avenue, Southeast 16th Street, Nebo Road. So, we utilize a lot of overland drainage in various areas of the city for stormwater drainage. And so, basically, this is to direct your stormwater away from the road surfaces, and so in a lot of these cases, vegetation had built up, and they hadn't, they were resulting a lot of standing water and our storm drains backing up onto our roadways. And obviously, this is just a breeding pond for mosquitoes and causes physical deterioration, deterioration to our roadways and developed property. So, we went through and we actually cleaned out a lot of these and removed the blockages so they're actually able to flow the stormwater now. So, there's just kind of some pictures of some before, during, and after by the contractors that completed the work. Next up is an unplanned valve replacement. This one, we wanted to just really highlight the importance of our water system and what happens in a water main leak. So, it, these water main leaks never seem to happen in a nine-to-five, Monday-to-Friday situation. It's usually in the middle of the night that, you know, we'll have something come up, and the water treatment plant will call and say, you know, we're losing water. So, these guys are out in the middle of the nights doing, moving valves. So, the crew operated a dozen valves in the area of Douglas Road and 13th Street in the middle of the night to try and control this, and they found four of those valves continued to leak after they were operated. So, at the time, they replaced the one valve, and there was three other that we knew we were going to have to replace. So, they actually sat down and decided instead of taking the residents' water up and down three times, which would have put them on boil water advisory, given them lack of water for a temporary period, and disrupted them three different times, we actually sent out two public work crews and a contractor to replace all three valves at once, something that hasn't been done a lot, but it really minimized the disruption to the residents, and they were able to do it all within the day. So, that was a lot of planning and coordinating, so a lot of kudos to the crew that worked together during that time because that's a lot of traffic, and that's a lot of considerations on that kind of busy job site. Next up is the lift stations. So, we did a lot on fall protection this year because we did not have proper fall protection in Lift 1 and Lift 3, so I'm not going to go into detail. You can kind of see all the before pictures and the after pictures, but we did everything from like floor-mounted Davit arm systems to handrails, and basically, this not only provides fall protection, but also rescue capabilities for the employee entering the access point, but also for the employee who is monitoring above. So, this just makes things a lot safer and better for our workers going into these situations. Next up is a deep dig. So, this was another joint effort between a few departments within the city, and the big ones being the Public Works Sewer and Water Department, the Safety Department, and the Waverne Fire collaborated. So, this particular sewer line was a depth of 17 feet, and it took a lot of steps to ensure that we could actually do this replacement safely. So, we did have to notify the Division of Labor Relations and Work Safety on this because we were digging an excavation deeper than five meters that a worker would be required to enter, and I think one of the proud moments for all the groups there is an OH&amp;S officer visited the site and saw no contravention. So, that's a kudos to a lot of people who put a lot of planning and effort into making that happen safely. And I think it just shows the collaboration between teams, you know, that the Waverne Fire Department brought the ladder truck and a team to provide fall arrest and rescue. So, that was just, they managed to get the job completed and site secured at the end of the day, so. Another big one is road repair. So, anybody that tried to go down Nebo Road would have noticed this one. So, this was a really big road repair because there was a lot of structural degradation due to the base being built on unstable clays that, basically, those clays will flex a lot with the moisture changed underground. So, this was a full rebuild in 2021, and it was designed to hold up to the elements and the traffic loaded that is required for an industrial area there. So, we worked with Jenko Asphalt on this, and I think anybody who's driven Nebo Road can see the vast improvement to it now. So, I think that was a project that's quite well done. Some other road repairs were Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South, and these ones were a little different because they've been kind of one of those ones that every, every year it heaves or washes out in the spring as the frost boils come out. And so, this year, we decided to do a more significant rebuild. So, we excavated it, and once again, it was incompetent clay that would heave as the moisture from the spring saturated it. And so, what we actually did was we put a geotextile membrane, and you can see that in the picture, and we packed it with a granule material, and basically, this spreads out the traffic load and it'll reduce that heaving. So, our expectation is this coming spring, you're not going to see that on that road, and it's going to hold up a lot longer for more years. So, and that just kind of, that picture was taken just to kind of show the geotextile membrane that we placed. So, another thing that we brought in was fleet management, and we've brought in an app called Fleetio Go. And this is to become, we wanted an alternate to spreadsheets and a paper-laden tracking system. And so, we went to a mobile fleet management application, and basically, this allows us to track all the things that are happening with our vehicles, so maintenance, inspection, tracking, analytics, utilization, and total cost of ownership data. And ultimately, what this does is it helps us project the useful life of the fleet assets and form a three-to-five-year plan for replacements. So, by reviewing very low and very high utilization rates, we can effectively rotate or replace units to spread out the utilization and maximize the lifespan of the fleet. And we have all this data now to ensure that we can properly maintain the fleet assets of the city. Another thing is unplanned work requests. So, these are all taken care of in our CGS system. So, essentially, we maintain a data historian on all utility repairs and customer requests, and we track that workflow so we can know what department has it, and also it ensures that we don't lose any of our residents' issues that have been brought up. So, if we, if we get an asphalt complaint in late fall and we know we can't fix it, it sits in the system so that we can go and deal with it in the spring, so it makes sure that we don't lose anything. And then also, it does track through the department so the new, so the other departments know when the one department is done, and they know that they can come in, and it's their turn to complete the task. So, it's a tracking system for that as well. So, the other big thing for us was the fleet storage building, and so we focused on the moving into there. And a lot of what they did was, they work on the set-in-order stage of the Five S Principle to maximize basin to prepare for refined inventory control. So, essentially, that means we did a big declutter program, and we didn't put anything into the fleet storage building that we didn't need anymore. So, we can say that all equipment used year-round, including crew trucks, are now stored in the fleet storage building, and all seasonal equipment is now inside the cold storage building, and this increases operational efficiency and extends the life of our assets. So, they did a lot of cleaning and ensuring that we were putting proper things in the proper places. So, another highlight for our department was the traffic bylaw. And so, in conjunction with the city clerk and the chief of police, the engineering department, we all worked on the traffic bylaw to get it passed in June of 2021. So, some key things were the recreational zones, restricted times in school and recreational zones, changes to the truck route, and adjustments to speed limits at the city limits. So, these are based on transportation study done in 2019, statistical data from the police department, research data from other municipalities, and technical expertise from the various departments. So, I think, you know, we saw the paper side of it, but in total, with the addition and the closing of the schools alone, there was 145 sign changes on school and recreational zones, and in a total, there was 195 sign changes to actually make the traffic bylaw happen physically within the city. So, they did, the Public Works Department did all those signs, and kudos to them for some tight timelines as they tried to get them all in before the school season started because, once again, with COVID, supply chain issue became a thing where signs were harder to get and took a longer lead time, so. Is the Traffic Safety Fund, and so this year, we were awarded close to $27,000, and this was able to fund three locations of flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs, and this encompassed area around the new Credit Union Sparks Center, Legacy Park, Jubilee Park, and basically, it encased the pedestrian flow pathways to those facilities. We did put five in total, but we were sponsored for three of the five locations as well as a radar speed sign, which just is on Rixmas Crescent to tell you what your speed is because you are in a recreational zone there, so it'll tell you if you're speeding or not. So, basically, these safety measures allow pedestrians and families safer access to two of our major recreational facilities, the new school, parks, walking trails, and outdoor sports facilities. And that program is sponsored through the government of Saskatchewan. And last is our staff transition. So, we just wanted to highlight some of our newer employees that joined us in 2021. So, one is Kevin Lennon, our transportation manager. He has a strong background in safety, quality control, construction, and management. And then some of our newer people in Public Works, so Jody McCarskey is our transportation chargehand, Sherry Harpum, Carrie Reed, Dawson Goulash, and Nolan Hollenty, I'm probably butchering his name, but, so they joined our Public Works Department. And then finally, in the engineering department, we did hire a municipal engineering technologist and a municipal engineer, Troy Sidloski and Renee Cognet. So, the engineering department does now hold degrees or diplomas in all different disciplines, so we feel that we're pretty set up for the future, so. And that is the 2021 engineering report.
Now, Mr. Van Bitcher.
Thank you, worship. Thanks for shortening that up, Jen. No, in all honesty, both the report that yourself and Janine put together were fantastic. I appreciate all the work that your departments and yourselves put into it. For me, it was kind of a review of everything that was done in the last year, and most of it was a reminder, some of it was, oh, I didn't know that. So, it's great, and I encourage residents to take a look at it online, and they find out where their tax dollars are being spent, how well they're being spent. I think it's all, you're collecting all the information and data, and you're putting it to use so the taxpayers' dollars are being spent very wisely, and the length of your, and the depth of your review shows how dedicated you guys are and your staff are, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Richard?
No. I guess just the comments, too, is that it echoed the same thing, and it also, I'd like to say to the citizens, it shows that what our administration has done here for moving the city forward. A lot of cities are struggling. We go to the mayor's meetings, a lot of cities are struggling for the infrastructure. We're doing very well with what we're moving forward on to all this stuff out there. One of the ambulance people, not my son, but another ambulance person, said to me that they were, they wanted to give kudos to the city workers. that they was, they wanted to give kudos to the city works for their fantastic street cleaning. They go to different cities throughout the province, and they said, this Weyburn is by far the best city for driving in for their, like, all the snow and everything. Our city works has done very, very well, and engineering has done very well. So it's very good to all administration for what we're doing for the city. The city is running exceptionally well here. Although people may get frustrated, we, with, in the big picture, we're doing very, very well. And we've got the pothole machine that I'm always, that's coming out in the springtime, and also the...
It's coming.
It's coming, yeah.
It's coming. I've seen pictures of it still being built, and it is coming, and we are very hopeful for spring.
Yes, and in 2022 is going to be a very exciting year for a lot more maintenance, too.
I hate to interrupt You Worship, but I was not going to ask that question tonight about the pothole patch, and that's why I emailed our engineer today, and I got all the information, but thank you, Your Worship.
Yes, okay. So, yes, very good. And you, I just was kind of disappointed that you didn't include Mr. Mickel's skydiving picture as he was coming down. I thought that you were...
I think that's coming in 2022. Yeah, that's what I heard.
Are they coming back? Is that, they are?
So they've asked to come back for one weekend. They haven't given us any information past that. That was kind of at the end of 2021. So we'll chat with them to decide if they want to come back or not, but they had proposed that at the end of 2021, coming back for a weekend in 2022.
Well, thank you for all that. Any more comments? No? Seeing none, well, thank you very much, ladies, and thanks to, again, all the departments and administration for the outstanding job done in 2021. We look forward to what it is going to move forward in 2022 here. Do you have, and I guess those reports will be accepted and filed and moved forward. Consent agenda, water treatment plant report. Do you have a motion, please?
I have a motion, Your Worship, that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carrie, Fire Department report, December and January.
Your Worship, those were all accepted as one.
All of them?
Yeah, yeah.
There, all as one, okay. Motions, accounts payable. Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,540,528.88 from January 21st to February 10th of 2022 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
And questions? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie, unanimously. Mr. Warren, this is the appointment of the fire chief.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So I'd like to announce our new fire chief, so Trent Lee. Trent Lee was, been with us since December the first as our deputy chief. He then moved up into being our interim fire chief then in December. And then officially, on February 7th, we announced Trent as our new fire chief. We are very excited, as a senior leadership team, as a city, to have Trent a part of our team. Trent brings a lot of experience to our municipality. He brings a lot of dedication to the fire field, and he'll provide a lot of knowledge and expertise to help both our careers and our paid-on-call firefighters to move forward as a municipality. So we're really excited to have Trent here. I'd like to call Trent up and say a few words, if you'd like Trent.
You just have to press the button there and...
Didn't realize there'd be a camera on me. Your Worship, members of council, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here and to be announced as the fire chief for the city of Weyburn. I'm looking forward to the future here in the city, fostering a great relationship with council and the citizens of Weyburn, and looking forward to promoting fire prevention and life safety within the city. Thank you for the promotion.
You're welcome. Welcome to the city. I guess if you want to...
Make a motion. You make it.
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that Trent Lee be and is hereby appointed as the fire chief for the city of Weyburn.
Your Worship, I'm pleased to second that motion.
Questions, comments? Just again, from the entire council, we welcome you to the city, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. Call the question, all in favor? Wield loader tender, if you would.
Yes, thank you. So this is a wield loader. So we, Fleet Services has allotted department budget for capital purchase of $300,000 for a wield loader, and the Fleet Services Department will be selling a 1998 Case 621B wield loader at auction with an estimated value of approximately $25,000. So on January 14th, this tender was posted on SAS Tenders and City of Weyburn website, and we asked submission for one wield loader. Quotations had to be received by January 31st, and we did receive a total of 12, and the results are as below. So an in-depth analysis was done on the bottom three vendors for pricing, and so we are recommending the Case 621G wield loader for the following reasons. They do have an additional two-year, 200-hour service program included in their pricing. The Case 621G is currently in stock and available for immediate delivery. We are seeing with some of the other ones, it is a six-to-nine-month wait time, and those are estimated wait times. As we have seen with other equipment, they could be even longer delays. Our operators and mechanics are very well-versed in the operation and maintenance of this Case 621G. This also allows us an ease of inventory and consumables and filters, as the fleet department has a 2021 Case 621G in the fleet inventory already, and the resale value at auction as a percentage of capital is higher for the Case product typically. So we are recommending that the wield loader be awarded to Redhead Equipment for the $208,000 plus applicable taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I would move that the bid of Redhead Equipment for the supply of one Case 621G wield loader in the amount of $208,000 be accepted.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question, or any questions before we call the question? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. The next is the Utility Work Machine Attachments Tender.
Yep. So the Utility Works Machine, so we have an allotted budget of $95,000 for a utility work machine with attachments, and we will be looking at selling a 2003 Case 60 XT Skid Steer at auction with an estimated value of $20,000. So on January 14th, this tender was posted on SAS Tenders in the City of Weyburn website, and we asked for the submission of one utility work machine with attachments. Quotations were received by the city of Weyburn by January 31st, and we did have a total of one tender was received, and the results are as follows. So it was Bobcat of Regina that bid on the machine, and then the following attachments, and they came in for a total of $95,460. This is somewhat of a specialized machine, so there aren't a lot of vendors out there that do provide this option. That is why we only have one bidder, but we do feel that that one bidder is competitive and comparable to what we have paid in the past for these machines. And so we are recommending that the 2022 Utility Works Machine and Attachments be awarded to Bobcat of Regina for the $95,460 plus applicable taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to make a motion that the bid of Bobcat of Regina for the supply of a Bobcat Utility Works Machine with attachments in the amount of $95,460 plus applicable taxes be accepted.
Your Worship, I will second that motion.
Questions?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jen, is this one of those ones that you're going to have to wait on, or is it readily available for you to get fairly soon?
I would have to look into that one. I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that when we did buy one last year, that it was in stock pretty quickly, and we were able to get it in a timely manner, and I suspect that'll be the same.
Now, for the questions, call the question. All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Cap funding application.
Okay, so that's me again. So this is a 2022 cap funding application for the Weyburn Municipal Airport. So the Weyburn Municipal Airport is requiring repairs and treatments to the main runway, the secondary runway, and two of the taxiways. These efforts will preserve the quality of these assets and reverse some of the deterioration over the last few years. Without intervention, deterioration would advance, and a much more costly rehabilitation would potentially be required to ensure the viability of these assets for the long term. So the Community Airport Partnership, or CAP, is a program of the Saskatchewan Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure. The program's stated goal is to provide capital contributions to airport infrastructure to rehabilitate and upgrade the network of strategic regional community airports in Saskatchewan. CAP funding is 50% of approved projects, up to a maximum of $275,000 per year. Preference is given to safety-related projects, such as the rehabilitation of runways, taxiways, and aprons, along with existing lighting and navigational weather reporting systems. Based on these criteria, administration would be applying for CAP funding for the following: repair of significant cracking and heaving at a multiple spots across both taxiways B and C, cracked ceiling on the main runway, repairs to the secondary runway, lime painting to freshen all pavement markings on both runways and both taxiways. The total support requested on this application for CAP funding would be 50% of the cost to complete these projects. The 2022 budget does have allocated funds for airport pavement repairs. In support of the funding application, CAP requires a letter indicating that the city of Weyburn is prepared to fund 50% of these projects should they be approved by the Community Airport Partnership Program. It is recommended that the Weyburn City Council provide the Community Airport Partnership Program with the required resolution for the CAP funding application.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, I do, Your Worship. I'd like to make a motion that the city council provide administration to make out the application to the Community Airport Partnership CAP program for funding to perform pavement repairs to the secondary runway and two taxiways at the Weyburn Airport, up to a maximum cost of $275,000, with a 50% cost share as set up by the Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Another project moving forward to continue our infrastructure program. No introduction bylaws, no unfinished business, new business. 10A was struck, and so we are on to 10B. If you would, Janine, home-based business application?
So an application has been received from the owner of 346 18th Street to operate a speech and language services business out of their residence. It's located in the R3 Zone. The business is proposed to operate Tuesdays and Thursdays, 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., and Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It would be considered a controversial use, as this business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. They have a minimal anticipated traffic flow increase, which would be one client at a time, and there's parking available in the driveway. Home-based businesses are permitted in the R3 Zone in residential dwellings, and they're generally deemed controversial when customers or clients are attending the home, and therefore require public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on January 31st to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home, and residents were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections were received. So home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake them in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based occupations generally must meet the following provisions. They must be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence, be compatible with residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. This home-based business application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, and therefore, staff are recommending option number one to council. So option number one would be that council approves home-based business permit 2022.002 at 346 18th Street, subject to the following conditions. No other person than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in any media. The home-based business shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area. The face of any sign on site must not exceed 0.092 square meters and must be placed within inside half of the front yard setback. They're subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients, and a City of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home-based business. Option number two would be the refusal of the home-based business permit, and those reasons would have to be provided tonight for the refusal.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'm pleased to move that council approves a home-based business permit 2022.002 to allow for a speech and language services business at 346 18th Street Northeast, block 15, block 3, Plan 78R51309, subject to the conditions provided.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Quires and announcements, anything? Mr. Warren, go ahead, or go ahead, Mr. Jenke first.
Thank you, Your Worship. There was a letter circulated with water bills last month regarding smoke detectors and requirements. Manager Warren, can you speak to that, and is that something that the province has pushed upon us, or...?
I'll let Janine answer that question, Council Jenke.
Thank you.
So the province has updated some regulations regarding smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, and those changes come into effect on July 1st of this year. So at this point, the city is doing some public education about what those requirements are and advising that people should make sure they are in compliance with those requirements. And, yeah, that's the sum of it. If they have any questions, they can reach out to the building department, and we can provide clarification on what those requirements are, and maybe if they have specific circumstances that they want to discuss.
Thank you, Janine.
Mr. Warren, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Your Worship, I'll speak to the changes that the province has made in regards to proof of vaccination. So effective today, proof of vaccination is changed for all buildings, including our municipal own and operate facilities. So that change is there's no requirement for proof of vaccination when people do attend our venues. The masking order is still in place. That's in place until February 28th. The city of Weyburn is always full, the direction from the province of Saskatchewan, so we do not have the mandates, one, in place for proof of vaccination, and then when February 28th happens into March 1st, we'll also remove the masking requirement. The one thing I would like to remind residents is that, as of right now, with the masking still in place, a masking is required in our facilities unless you're being active in physical activity. That's the biggest thing that I just want everyone to be aware of. So if you're a child playing hockey, or if you're an adult playing adult soccer, that's not a requirement for that. I also like to remind residents that we also have rapid antigen tests still available. Those are available at our Public Works Building on Monday to Friday from 8 till 12, and 1 till 4. Also, always remind people to do proper hand washing, social distancing, all that, as we continue to move forward through all the changes that we're seeing right now. And also, just provide some patience with our staff, you know, with the changes happening. That's a really hard time right now for them, just to make sure that they're trying to follow the rules put in place by the province of Saskatchewan. I am very thankful for the work that our staff has done through this and the leadership our council has provided throughout all the changes from the government and making sure that our residents are aware of what's occurring, not only just from the province, but also here in Weyburn throughout the pandemic.
Thank you. Anything else? Ladies back there, I was going to say, did you want to make any comment about the McLeod series, or do you want me to? Okay. Oh, brave souls at the arm. I just, you're, Discover Weyburn, talked about it, and so, Marta, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, yes, I'll kind of take a bit of your thing, but I think it's very interesting. It's 86th year, I believe, of this McLeod series. The first, the series is tonight, right now, Dick, going on.
It's the last game, dude.
Yeah, the game's starting.
You scoring that one? Have you got a score at the 5 o'clock game? Because the girls play at 7 tonight, Esteban, the girls play at 5, and the guys at 7.
Right, and so, and, yeah, the guys are going, did you know what, who won the game tonight at 5? Okay, so, anyway, then Wednesday, it's down in Esteban, so we'll see what's going. Marta, do you know who won?
Our boys won.
Our boys won?
Yeah. Last trillion.
Yeah. So we'll find out the score here just before we close off the meeting. But the girls are now playing now at 7?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you have no score, but that's okay.
88-51.
88-51, so...
We won it the last three years in a row.
We won it, oh, very good, so. It's, so, yeah, last year, they didn't have it, did they? No. So, so anyway, this is very, so well done, and we hopefully, and you were an old basketball player, weren't you? You know, football.
Your Worship, I played football. I am not coordinated enough to play basketball.
Okay.
Not all tall men can play basketball.
All right, so. Anyway, so that's the thing, so go Eagles, we're proud of them. Other than that, there's no notice of motions, and so with that, we'll call a call to adjournment. Thank you.